So I'm going to go through my spiel. And then I will say, prior to starting this evening with Article 33, I will ask Mr. Morgado, as I almost said, Mr. Mizikar, to provide information outstanding from last evening. Very good.
Mr. Manager, I've just been told that our fire chief is retiring at the end of June. So I should probably recognize him for 75 years. I know, I know, yeah. He actually looks fine. Yeah. No stains. How many years of service? Quite a few. No, don't worry. Okay, we're gonna get underway now, Jim. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Kane, and I have the distinct honor to serve as your Town Moderator for this second session of our 2024 Town Meeting. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening and welcome back for Session Two of our 2024 Annual Town Meeting. To ensure good order, tellers, please raise your hands so that all Town Meeting members can see you, and we ask that Town Meeting members be down slope of the yellow lines. All Town Meeting members should have their stickers clearly displayed so that all can see. Town Meeting members are asked to sit on this side of the tellers. Only Town Meeting members should be on this side of the tellers unless they're provided with specific permission by the moderator. Residents wishing to witness this evening are asked to sit in the rear seating. All department heads are asked to sit to my lower left so that they are in a convenient location to answer any questions. By way of reminder, our Town Meeting has a long and proud tradition of civil discourse and orderly debate. Outbursts in support or opposition of members' comments or votes outcome are not allowed. Furthermore, when one wishes to be recognized, please await my clear recognition and proceed to the microphone. If you're unable to move to a microphone, one will be brought to you. Once at the microphone, please clearly state your name and precinct so that we may proceed with your question. In order to ensure that all of your colleagues have an opportunity to speak, please limit your question to one with one follow-up if necessary. Please hold additional questions until others have had a chance to speak. Rest assured, you will be recognized. At this time, I'd like to recognize those to my left and right. To my right, Town Clerk Sharon Thomas and Town Council Steven Madouse. Our Finance Committee is further to my right, and I will ask its Chair Vikram to introduce himself and his colleagues.
Mr. Moderator. Introduce myself, Vikram Chabra, Chair of the Committee. To my right, Dennis O'Connell, Vice Chair, James Flynn, Clerk. In the order to his right, to Mr. Flynn's right, is Jean Budenhagen. And down on the floor facing you from right to left are Diana Crowley, Rajesh Veligupudi, and Lena Polito.
Thank you. To my left, Town Manager Kevin Mizikar, Chair of Select Board, John Samia. Would you introduce your colleagues?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To my left, I'd like to introduce our Vice Chair Teresa Flynn. And then on the table in front of the stage, from your right to left, our Clerk Michelle Conlin and Members Beth Cassavant and Carlos Garcia.
Thank you. With the introductions complete, I would like to just take a moment to recognize the years of service of our Fire Chief, who I am told will be retiring at the end of July. Thank you, Jim. Prior to getting underway, we had a couple of answers that Mr. Mizikar was going to provide to folks tonight as a result of questions from last evening. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, Town Meeting members. We counted four items that we wanted to provide some clarification to you on from last evening's proceedings. The first being with regards to the rental of the Donahue Rowing Center. We stopped renting the rowing center because of the cost of operating and cleaning. The building came too high and unsustainable. Renting the space for a nominal fee did not cover the expenses, and raising the rental rates to cover staffing and cleaning costs was not considered feasible at the time. However, we recognize the rowing center is truly a unique asset to this community with a lot of potential opportunities. We are currently engaging with a consultant to review Recreation Department's programs, both from operational and financial perspectives, and the DRC will be a part of that investigation to explore additional potential uses and improvements for the future. With regards to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services and their billing and means testing for their programs, SYSF offers services to all Shrewsbury residents regardless of income. Some of the programs that they help clients access are means-tested, but the clinical and case management services that they provide are available to all residents without a means The third area is with regards to debt service impact for the PFOS Treatment Plant. The first payment for that plant is expected in fiscal year '28. The average resident billing, which is equivalent to $15,650 gallons per quarter, would see a net quarterly bill increase of $4.22, which would equate to a yearly bill increase of And then with regards to some cursory overview, financial analysis regards to the new cemetery, there are 3,615 burial plots that have been designed into the new program at 65 Prospect Street for Phase One of the construction. And at today's prices, that would yield roughly $6.2 million in revenue, which of course exceeds the anticipated construction cost by roughly $2 million. So we appreciate the opportunity to provide clarity into those areas and look forward to the rest of Town Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. We'll now proceed to Article 33. I move the printed motion under Article 33.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 33 by a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
So Article 33 is the first of Community Preservation Act funding articles, and this is the financial transfer article where we're using the anticipated revenues derived locally and via a state estimate and placing them into their statutorily required set-asides as depicted within the Town Meeting Book.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 33? Not hearing or seeing any questions on Article 33. We'll call the roll. Majority vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes. Article 34. I move the printed motion under Article 34.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend the passage of Article 34 by a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
So the reason this has been requested for defeat is because the funding source has otherwise been identified outside of the CPA, and therefore it's recommended to be voted down.
Recommendation is to vote it down. Mr. Campanello, did I see your hand?
If there's any questions.
Very good. Any comments or questions with reference to this article? Not hearing or seeing any? Oh, yes.
Hi, it's Caroline Maycomber, Precinct Nine. I was just wondering, what is the alternative funding source? If we could have some information about that?
Sure. So the Affordable Housing Trust has been identified and approved, the use of Affordable Housing Trust funds for these purposes in partnership with the Housing Authority.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 35? Not hearing or seeing any? Thirty-four. Thirty-four. I'm just seeing if you're paying attention. Thank you. Article 34. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion is defeated. We'll now move to Bundle 21. Article 35, 36, 37, 38, 39. You have a package in your Town Meeting folder from Christopher McGoldrick, Director of Planning and Economic Development, regarding these matters. I move the printed motions under Articles 35, 36, 37, 38, and 39.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends Article 35 by a vote of nine to zero. Finance Committee recommends Article 36 by a vote of seven to zero. Finance Committee recommends Article 37 by a vote of nine to zero. Finance Committee recommends Article 38 by a vote of nine to zero. And the Finance Committee recommends Article 39 by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, anything to add?
Mr. McGoldrick will provide a brief overview of these.
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. Thank you. Christopher McGoldrick, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Article 35 is in reference to an application by the Library and Department of Public Works seeking to appropriate $13,450 from the Open Space and Recreation Reserve to make a permanent storywalk installation at the Lake Street Park. It showcases a monthly story from the Shrewsbury Public Library along with trails at the Lake Street Park by providing successive pages from a children's story along the path. It promotes early literacy, physical activity, and family time together in nature.
Comments or questions on Article 35? Why it's before you?
Hi, Caroline Maycomber, Precinct Nine. I know at Floral Street School, we were able to get volunteers to help us build a permanent storywalk behind the school, and it did not cost us $13,000. So I'm wondering why it would be so expensive to install at Lake Street Park?
Mr. McGoldrick.
So the amount of $13,450 is in relation to the quote that was received from the vendor for the storywalk. It includes full installation, which includes the labor and installation of those and purchase and acquisition of those materials for the storywalk.
Questions on 35?
Eiding Garnett, Precinct Two. What are we doing for competitive bids on these projects?
Mr. McGoldrick.
So the Community Preservation Committee evaluates these as they're submitted to them in terms of the bid proposals that are received. We seek to take these projects. They're also subject to a funding agreement. These are the best estimates that are provided, and the work gets bid out afterwards. So this is the cost that would fund from the best estimate of a quote. The dollar amount that's expended may be less than that. Any of those funds that are unused get returned back to the CPC Fund.
Follow-up.
I had asked at the Finance Committee meeting how we are delineating the labor that our recreation, I'm sorry, our recreation employees, I'm sorry, our parks employees are providing for the CPC Committee as opposed to when they're doing the work on hours and off hours, and who's providing this work, and how we're keeping track of that, and how this work is being done? If we can get an answer for that, thank you.
Mr. McGoldrick.
So the installation cost of this is in relation to an outside consultant completing that installation, so it would not be municipal staff.
Thank you. Further questions on Article 35? Okay, why don't we move to 36?
So Article 36 is for the Mountain View Gravestone Restoration Phase Two. This application was submitted by the Department of Public Works in coordination with the Historic District Commission. It seeks to appropriate $160,000 from the Historic Resources Reserve to implement restoration efforts of the historic gravestones as identified in the Phase One project approved last year and completed last year. This amount will allow for the appropriate distribution of funds from the Historic Resources Reserve. A remaining balance of $45,000 is anticipated to be requested at the fall special Town Meeting.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 36?
Hi, Melanie Petrucci, Precinct One. I'm also Chair of the Historic District Commission, and we are the co-sponsor on this CPC project. I just wanted to have some clarification as to why the amount was dropped from 205 down to 160,000?
Mr. McGoldrick.
So the original request was for 205,000. The appropriated amount that is being requested and was recommended by CPC was reduced to 160,000 due to the amount that is in that specific Historic Resources Reserve account. We would not have additional funds to cover the full balance.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
So if we were to go back for the remaining at Town Meeting, would that preclude us from going out to bid this summer or sometime soon if this article passes?
Mr. Esposito, good evening.
Kevin Esposito, Parks and Cemetery Manager. So when we go out to bid on this, we would go out for a certain amount of the project, and we would write in the rest as an alternate so we could carry out later on when we get the funds.
In the event a future Town Meeting appropriated further dollars?
Yes.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Thank you very much.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 36?
Luis Garand, Precinct Eight. At the risk of sounding disrespectful, I understand that we are coming up to our 300th anniversary celebration, but all over Europe, after 100 years, bones are removed to a common ossuary, and the graves are reused, particularly if there are no living family members paying respects for religious or other reasons. Why are we restoring graves of colonists?
Mr. McGoldrick.
So the graves that are in this portion are some of the earliest graves of residents of Shrewsbury. There's certainly some cultural attachment. Again, these were reviewed by CPC and submitted by both the Historic District Commission and the Department of Public Works in support of that local attachment.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 36? Let's move to 37.
So Article 37 is in relation to the Camp One Again parking facilities. This is an application by the Shrewsbury Parks and Maintenance Division as well as DPW. It seeks to appropriate $100,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space and Recreation Reserve for the purpose of building parking at the Camp One Again facility. This funding request is an additional amount from the 142 that was previously approved May 2023. This money will be used to fund work that previously was anticipated to be completed in-house by municipal staff and will now be bid out.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 37?
Bridget Hilton, Precinct Eight. This is more of a procedural question. Is it possible to separate out these three articles? Could we make a motion to separate them?
We can take them separate along the way, absolutely.
Okay. Do I have to make a motion for it, or do we just get to do this?
What do you mean?
We'd like to vote on them separately. They're in a bundle.
Well, why don't we walk through them?
Okay.
And then we can, the beauty of the bundling is if there are questions, we can deal with them individually, vote them individually, whatever the body wants.
Okay. Thank you. So we can vote.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 37?
Donna O'Connor, Precinct Two. I'm just curious, is there a plan for Camp One Again with the Parks Department? Or are we just randomly putting things in, which aren't bad things? I don't think they're bad things, but I would think it would be helpful to see if there's a plan for Camp One Again before we just keep adding hundreds of thousands to something without a plan. Could be my, I know there's, I know there's a trail, but I didn't know if there was a general plan for the area.
Mr. McGoldrick.
So I don't believe that there's a specific master plan for the Camp One Again site. What I would offer is that these are primarily projects that have been proposed so far primarily improving existing facilities, whether it's trail facilities or, you know, the parking there is more of a gravel lot. So this would improve that facility to provide more access to that, but I don't believe there's a specific master plan.
Judy Vetter, Precinct Nine. I'm not a part of the towns parks and rec, however, I do go over to Camp One Again, and right now there actually isn't any parking lot. You have to actually park across the street, and it's a, the traffic is absolutely extremely fast. It's also extremely icy in the winter. So what they're doing is they're putting, they've started a clearing, and they're putting a parking lot that's going to be off 140. And I think also, and again, as I'm not speaking for the Trail Committee, but my understanding is that some of that is going to go to some wheelchair access into the park and general improvements. So I think that if anybody is interested in taking a walk in the woods, I would definitely recommend going over and taking a look at, and going there because it's a, it's a nice little walking place for Shrewsbury. So I ask that you continue to support these, this money for this type of improvement.
Very good.
I'm not opposed to this. I actually support it. I would just like to see a plan for the area.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 37?
Stefan Hess, Precinct Eight, and also Co-Chair or Vice Chair of the Trails Committee. So we do have some, there's quite a few trails that are already laid out in Camp One Again, and we also presented our vision to the Select Board as well as to CPC the last few months. And now we're going through the formal planning process. There is an ADA trail, and there are not enough of those in town, so we're looking to, from that parking lot, go to the ruins there, which also overlooks a brook and allows more connectivity and ability for everybody to enjoy nature and the trails in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 37?
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct Nine. Just wondering, sort of a general question. Is there a way to find out where these motions come from as far as the articles? So in other words, was it a community group that requested these funds? And then also, how many bids did we get for this price of $100,000 for paving? And just a really silly question, I have no idea where Camp One Again is. Could someone please tell me?
Mr. Mizikar.
Sure. So Camp One Again is just to the north of the UPS facility on 140. If you're driving north, it's on your left. Whenever CPC articles, so the Community Preservation Committee receives applications and reviews these matters at their public meetings throughout the course of the fall into the mid-winter, and at such a time when the Select Board is ready to sign the warrant for Town Meeting, they make a recommendation of what needs to be included. So that's all handled through the CPC through their public meeting process and public hearings. With regards to procurement and financials with these projects, so at this point, they are estimates. Sometimes estimates are developed in-house through our engineering team, and sometimes we seek informal bid estimates from external companies. If Town Meeting appropriates the funds, we then follow the requisite Massachusetts general laws for procurement. That would fall through a variety of general laws in four different chapters. So they vary each for a little bit, a little bit, depending on the total cost of the project and the total type of work that's being done. So if it's a good or service, it would be under Chapter 30B, and if it's under some type of construction, it'd be under Chapter 140. uh, some type of construction, it'd be under Chapter one forty-nine or thirty, thirty-nine M. Um, so ju- just a multitude of rules and laws that we have to follow, um, and we apply those if this body appropriates funds for that.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Dearing?
Martha Dearing, Precinct Four. I love the idea of improving this, especially that there's going to be an ADA accessible site for folks. However, I also want to keep in mind that we want to, there's an amazing amount of wildlife in there, from deer to porcupines and all sorts of other things. So, I, I do want to keep it a very natural kind of a place so that wildlife, we will still thrive there.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article thirty-seven? Not hearing or seeing anyone. Move to Article thirty-eight.
So, Article thirty-eight, uh, is the Camp One Again Wheelchair Access Trail. Um, as has been discussed, uh, that application is, uh, submitted by the Trails Committee, uh, in coordination with Shrewsbury Parks and Cemeteries. It seeks to appropriate four thousand one hundred and fifty-seven from the Open Space and Recreation Reserve account to facilitate improvements, uh, to approximately six hundred and eighty feet of trail at Camp One Again. It'll create a wheelchair-accessible connection from the proposed new parking area and its accessible parking space, uh, with the site of the former Girl Scout camp. Uh, this satisfies, this, uh, funding amount satisfies the twenty percent local match associated with the Mass Trails Grant to be applied for, uh, the balance of that being twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Comments or questions with reference to Article thirty-eight? Not hearing or seeing any. We'll move to Article thirty-nine.
Article thirty-nine, uh, is for the District Five Schoolhouse ADA, uh, Study Phase Two. Uh, this is an application, uh, from the Shrewsbury Historical Society, and the Town of Shrewsbury seeks to appropriate five thousand dollars from the Historic Resources Reserve account, uh, to conduct a feasibility study by an architectural firm with historic preservation expertise to explore the implementation of findings from the Phase One study. Uh, this was a report that was completed in twenty twenty-three and stated that future rehabilitations need to address compliance with state and federal accessibility regulations regarding historic places.
Comments or questions with reference to Article thirty-nine? Thirty-nine? Yes.
Just a quick one. Caroline May Cumber, Precinct Nine. Um, obviously, we want to be ADA compliant. I'm just wondering, is this schoolhouse open to the public currently or is it somewhere that kids go on field trips or do people actually go in this building or is it just something you drive by to look at? Thank you.
Mr. McGoldrick?
Uh, it is not currently open to the public. Uh, I believe they are evaluating, uh, with this ADA accessibility if, uh, additional public, uh, events or accessibility could be, uh, conducted.
Comments or questions with reference to Article thirty-nine? Yes.
Jean Pandiani, Precinct Six. I'm just double-checking on the location of this schoolhouse. Is it the one in the center or the one at the corner of Old Mill Road?
Mr. McGoldrick?
Uh, this is the one, uh, Old Mill Road.
Is there parking at that location now?
Uh, there is a, a, a small gravel lot that is on there. It's, it's not largely visible, but there is some parking there.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article thirty-nine? Not hearing or seeing anyone. Let's go back to take the bundle, bundle twenty-one, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. If there are no fir-, we have a question? Yes?
Dayton Garnett, Precinct Two. Same as last town meeting, I would like to make a motion to take these articles individually. I don't feel that this is a bundle that we should be putting together. I think these each deserve their own merit and we should not be voting on them together. Thank you.
Very, very good. Okay, we will now, uh, go forward with the vote on Article thirty-five. A simple majority, all those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thirty-five passes. Thirty-six, all those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Thirty-seven, all those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article thirty-eight, all those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
And Article thirty-nine, all those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article forty?
I moved the printed motion under Article forty.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article forty by a vote of nine to zero.
Very good. Mr. Mizikar?
This article proposes to authorize the Select Board to provide an easement over a portion of the town-owned land at twenty Centec Boulevard. The easement, as shown on the screen, would enable traffic safety by creating a four-way intersection with Centec Boule- Centec Boulevard and Fortune Boulevard and a driveway proposed for a new UPS regional warehouse facility. Additionally, since underground utilities will be brought from Fortune Boulevard, this would reduce the complexity of those interconnections, uh, through a direct route from Fortune Boulevard through the easement over to the site. We felt that it was prudent to bring this article forward because of the responsiveness of the developers to the request of the town. This includes mu- moving roughly thirty percent of the building into Shrewsbury with previous proposals having the buildings situated entirely within Grafton. You will note the teal or blue line that's shown on the screen, um, is the town line and the building situated just below, uh, the midpoint and down. Uh, to the right is the Town of Shrewsbury, to the left is the Town of Grafton. That represents roughly thirty percent of the building. Again, as originally proposed, when UPS bought the property in two thousand and nineteen, they had the entire building situated within Grafton. Upon reintroducing their proposal to construct here within the industrial zone, uh, we have requested that they move the building as much as possible into Shrewsbury, which has led to thirty percent being moved here. That means approximately twenty-three million dollars of value of that new building would be construction and constructed in Shrewsbury, uh, just as a shell. With personal property unknown at this time, we are using conservative estimates. That would provide roughly two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in annual property tax revenue. Finally, in order to formally convey the easement if authorized, the town would have to follow the procurement process set forth under Chapter thirty-B, Section sixteen. This easement would be conditioned as non-exclusive and include reversionary rights. This town has taken an initial step to have the property appraised. It is valued, uh, at two hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article forty? Yes.
Martha Dearing, Precinct Four. Would the other UPS site be closing based because they're building this new one?
Mr. Mizikar?
No. Um, so this, these are two different types of facilities. So, this is a regional, uh, truck, like tractor-trailer, tractor-trailer facility where, uh, the facility at one forty is considered a final mile facility, the, the brown trucks that you see. So, um, at this time, it, both facilities would operate.
Thank you.
Sure.
Comments or questions with reference to Article forty? Yes.
Caroline May Cumber, Precinct Nine. Um, this appears to be yet another development right near where I live on Walnut Street, off twenty. Um, and I'm growing increasingly more concerned about my son's asthma and exposure to diesel fumes. It sounds like this is going to be a trucking depot like the one that just got, um, passed last night that's going to have a hundred eighty bays for trucks. I'm not sure how many bays this is expected to have, but it sounded like this was going to quote-unquote be Grafton's problem, and now we've decided to make thirty percent of it our problem, all for just two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in tax levy, which is a miniscule amount of our budget for the town. So, I guess I'm just trying to understand why we would try to bring in thirty percent of this building project when we could have had none of it. Just kind of a rhetorical question.
Is there a, do you want to provide an answer, Mr. Mizikar? Do you have an answer?
I mean, my response would be either a hundred percent of the building will be in Grafton, uh, with zero percent in Shrewsbury with zero dollars coming to the Town of Shrewsbury, or thirty percent could be in Shrewsbury, and we would, uh, be able to reap some tax benefit. Regardless if the building is in Shrewsbury or entirely in Grafton, um, the project will, uh, has access to Route, Route twenty. So, the goal was to reap some type of tax benefit, knowing that the, the project, if permitted, would go forward and exist, uh, regardless of, if any of it was here or not.
Further comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Chris Ruttigliano, Precinct Seven. I'm just wondering, how does, how do first responders work with something like that that's in multiple towns? That you, do the fire calls go there? Thirty percent of the fire calls go there? Um, you know, police response? I, you know, we have a fire department right up the street from that, which is great, but I'm just wondering, how, how does, how does that work with, uh, police and fire as far as a building being in two pr- two towns?
Well, before he retires, why don't we ask the fire chief?
That's why I asked.
Jim, volunteer fire chief for the next two months. Uh, it would be considered a borderline property where we would have a dual response with both Grafton, uh, and Shrewsbury. We have a number of, uh, places, um, around town where we have what we call automatic aid, like the YMCA is in Westboro, but the entrance of it is in Northborough and Shrewsbury. So, one engine from each town responds when there's a fire alarm there, and, um, I would say the same, uh, agreements would be in place, uh, for the new UPS facility.
Thank you, chief. Satisfied? Gentleman right next to him.
Hi, Steve Danielson, Precinct Nine. Uh, I, yeah, I was just looking at, uh, the, the size of this. Uh, I, I looked online. I was trying to find some articles about it. It seems like two thousand eighteen was the last time it was referenced. It looked like it was about eight hundred thousand square feet, which is about, uh, like estimated about six times bigger than the current UPS. And looking at the, the picture, uh, it, the facility is about the size of my neighborhood, which is in the picture just above. So, it's about a hundred and fifty houses. You can see it's about, almost the same size. When I looked at the ways that they most likely would come out of, uh, the facility, it looks like probably three-quarters of the traffic would go up Route twenty. Uh, if they have to go north, east, or west, they go to Route twenty. It wouldn't be very advantageous to go, uh, it through Grafton o- over to, uh, the Mass Bike. So, I don't know if they are giving any sort of compensation. Uh, I know that the Centec Boulevard and the whole Route twenty is supposed to be rebuilt, and, uh, they talked about adding six lanes over by the, uh, Seasons Gas Stations there so that UPS can pull out more efficiently. But, um, it seems like, I guess it's more a comment that we're going to have quite a bit of tra- we already have a lot of traffic, eighteen-wheelers there, and I would expect that we probably would have more, um, emergency response because we're only half a mile. If they call, we, we would, we would be the first responders and as well as all of that three-quarters of the traffic that I, I'm estimating, uh, that might be more traffic accidents up and down Route twenty. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but I-
Mr. Mizikar?
Hopefully, they give us a lot of compensation for building this.
Mr. Mizikar?
So, a couple of thoughts, um, with regards to Route twenty. Uh, of course, through the advocacy of, uh, State Representative Kane and, and, um, Senator Moore and Congressman McGovern, we are, um, moving closer to, uh, major, um, widening and, uh, safety improvement of the Route twenty corridor from roughly South Street to the Northborough Line there. I'll put a plug in. If you want to join me Thursday night at a public hearing with MassDOT about, um, those improvements, would love to see you there and take any comments and questions. Uh, there's a flyer that was on the table about that initiative, thirty million dollar investment. So, one of the reasons that we've felt that it was important to get some of the building into town and generate revenue was to cover, uh, costs like police and fire services and, uh, ancillary things like that, um, within this corridor that we know will be responding to, again, whether or not, um, a part of the buildings in Shrewsbury. Uh, we've worked very closely and have a, a great relationship that is facilitated by our state delegation with Mass DOT, and this has been on our radar and in negotiations with our, uh, regular meetings that we have with DOT. We know that there needs to be investment made in Centec Boulevard and Route twenty and, and, uh, the lanes and the configuration, and that would, that's all going to be part of the conversation in the permitting process with this project. Um, I may have missed a important part of this is, if you can see the, the highlighted easement there to the, to the right of the map, um, when we talk about where trucks are going to go, the opportunity with the easement is for them to come out through that shaded area and at the four-way intersection with, uh, Fortune Boulevard. Their alternative, if they don't get the easement, is just south of that and accessing Centec Boulevard across their own property, um, just south of Fortune Boulevard. So, that creates an awkward intersection that is much less safe from a traffic control standpoint, standpoint. So, um, that is one of the, the additional reasons that, that we felt it was important to consider this easement, um, the traffic safety and the fact that trucks are coming to Centec Boulevard. I would say seventy-five percent of the traffic is a very conservative number. It's when, you're looking at eighteen-wheelers, you're, you're probably talking about a hundred percent of those coming Centec Boulevard to Route twenty.
Further comments or questions with, do you have a follow-up, sir? Just one second. He'll get you a microphone. Thank you.
Sorry. Uh, when is it supposed to happen? Uh, do you have any timeline of when this is and Mass DOT expanding the highway? And, yeah, I am very concerned about a lot more eighteen. It sounds like it's a hundred percent eighteen-wheelers going up and down Centec and on twenty. And I, anyways, do you have a timeline?
Yeah, sure. So, uh, with regards to the improvements that are slated for Route twenty right now and funded, those would begin in twenty twenty-six. This project is proposed to be, uh, coming forward potentially, uh, to both towns' planning boards this June. So, it will take them a while to get through permitting and, and of course, building a, a large facility, which we understand to be about eight hundred and eighty thousand square feet, would take a couple of years. So, um, you know, kind of lining up, so to speak, you know, depending on the, the pace of the permitting and state review and getting all those approvals in place and making sure we do what we need to do for Route twenty with, with regards to this project.
Further comments or questions with reference to, yes, right down front?
Chris, did you pray, Precinct One? Um, I'm looking at my phone in addition to the map. I'm looking for some clarification of the red lines, first of all. I don't see it indicated on the map, if, on the legend, as well as the Aqua line as well. Is that the property line or town line? Sorry. Thank you.
Which line? I don't know if anyone wants to call out better colors. That's an issue of mine. Is the town line between Shrewsbury and Grafton. That's the thick line there running. Uh, and then the red, uh, shaded area is the town parcel, uh, that we own, which is known as twenty Centec Boulevard. It's quite a large parcel and includes fire station and Selco substation, uh, at this time. Everything with the easement, if you want to orient yourself perhaps by memory, is south of the high-tension lines, which is those dashed lines. Yeah, who's got that? Alex? Wonderful. Those are the high-tension lines there. They're dash lines, so everything is the south of that. And this is the easement right here that she's pointing at. And then just to the south of that would be the proposed driveway if the easement wasn't granted.
Follow-up?
Please.
So, my follow-up would be, uh- So, my follow-up would be, almost twofold, Mr. Moderator, is how many bays they're anticipating in this facility? In addition, Centec, I'm guessing, falls under town roads, not state? Is that correct?
Mr. Mizuka.
I'm sorry. What do you mean by that?
Jurisdiction.
Oh, jurisdiction?
Yes.
So, it's a tough question that's still under discussion because it's awfully close to Route 20 and is going to have, you know, interactions with Route 20, and that's what we're working in partnership with UMass, or UMass, with MassDOT to make sure that we, both for the practicality of the project and the safety of the corridor itself, that we address everything that we need to based upon this investment. Centec Boulevard is, of course, a town road.
Okay. Just a comment, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
How many bays was it? That was what I was, the other part of my question, actually. I know it's not before the planning board is yet, but was there an anticipated?
I don't have a number in front of me. I don't know if anyone on my staff or team has a number of bays.
Does not appear that we have that. Mr. McGoldrick, do you have the number of bays?
So, I don't have the number in front of me, but the plans have been submitted to the planning board, and they should be on the town website. I'll try to get that number to you.
Please, thank you.
So, I appreciate bringing this forward, especially in light of what is going on at MassDOT, but I also am concerned because of the traffic that could potentially be on this road. And I think of tractor-trailers because one tractor-trailer equals 900 and 9,600 passenger vehicles. So, I think of the wear and tear on that road. In addition, yes, going out to a state road, if the timing meets up, hopefully it would, as well as traffic where it would be generated, as well as the public safety down in that neck of the woods. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 40? Yes, sir.
John Segel, Precinct 2. I'm a little confused. If we go way back to the beginning, they talked about initially the building being totally in Grafton versus Shrewsbury and getting more of it in Shrews, you know, I think we use the phrase, getting more of it in Shrewsbury. So, the question is, is this the revised addition, or is the building going to be moved from this iteration to where more of it will be in Shrewsbury?
Mr. Mizuka.
This is the revised addition with 30% of the building in Shrewsbury.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 40? Anyone new? Yes.
Bridget Hilton, Precinct 8. I just wanted to point it out, point out that the town did something similar in my neighborhood with the FedEx Distribution Center, where a four-way traffic light was added to access 140. And I don't have concrete statistics, but having lived in the neighborhood, I can say there's been less accidents at that intersection than there were before. And so, I just want to urge the body to take in consideration passenger safety because not, having an 18-wheeler coming, as we frequently do on 140, and there's no stoplights or a four-way intersection, is a pretty dangerous situation. So, I think this proposal, given that the building's going to happen either way, it's going to affect us either way, is probably the safest way to do it. So, I just wanted everyone to take that into consideration.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 40?
Judy Vetter, Precinct 9. If we do grant this easement, and first, I want to say thank you for getting 30% in Shrewsbury so that we can get the tax. So, thank you for doing that. I do think it's a good idea if we can get the intersection squared up. I guess my question is, if we pass this easement tonight, is there any contingency, or is there any requirement that that 30% of the building stay in Shrewsbury? Is, I mean, is there a possibility that we grant the easement and then they sort of reneg on the agreement?
Mr. Mizuka.
No, we would write the request for proposals that requires and makes the construction of the building a requirement to grant the easement.
Mr. Remington. Just a second. He's coming to you.
Dave Remington, Precinct 9. See, my house, you can see on that as well. So, I've been watching this project, and it's not going to be a traffic light. That's going to be a stop sign. So, they're going to be churning off a stop sign onto it. Once they get to 20, then they can turn on a stoplight, but you can barely get a car to turn off a Centec into 20. So, I'm not sure how they're going to do a tractor-trailer. But yeah, that's just a stop sign unless they've changed it.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with, yes?
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. Just a couple of questions as far as what traffic studies and environmental impact studies have been done. Is this something we can stop? Is it too late? And I don't mean that to be a cute question, but it seems like the majority of our town meeting thus far has been talking about building more and more and more paved surfaces and buildings, and we're losing pretty much all the open space that's left in this town, which is one of the things I really enjoyed when I moved here in 2010. But the landscape of this town has changed so drastically. And I'm just curious why everything seems to be getting dumped in the Route 20 corridor. We live in what's considered rural residential A for our zone on Walnut Street, up the hill from Wilickers, where Trolley Lane is, and it's a lovely wooded street. But it seems like every new building project, whether it's this on Centec Boulevard, the new apartments by Market Basket, the new apartments on Route 20 at Green Street, the new apartments on Route 20 at Stony Hill Drive, and then the proposed ones for Article 44 at Christmas Tree Shops, I don't understand why everything is getting dumped essentially in our corner of town, including the town dump, which is, you know, we knew it was there when we moved to where we live now. But I guess I'm just wondering, why is everything going on the Route 20 corridor? It just, quite frankly, doesn't seem fair to the residents of my neighborhood, of this neighborhood. So, I'm wondering why we're not looking at alternative ways to grow the tax base of this town, things that won't involve necessarily paving over paradise, you know, not to be cute, but.
Mr. Mizuka.
So, this is private property, right? And the private property owners have their rights within, you know, that zoning affords them. And there's certainly, you know, an increase in development in Shrewsbury and most of the region. And, you know, this is an industrial-zoned area. UPS has owned it since 2018. Again, the vast majority is in Grafton. So, you know, I honestly don't know what else to say besides, you know, it's private property and there's an interest in development, and they are bringing forward a development proposal as has been indicated this evening. So, with regards to your preliminary comments, with regards to permitting and environmental studies, you know, that is taking place in other venues, right, with the planning board and other regulatory bodies. What we're looking at here is whether or not we should allow the disposal of a piece of town land through an easement process associated with this project.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 40? Anyone new? Right down there. Okay.
Diane Jones, Precinct 8. I'd just like to say, even if this building were rotated in such a way that it were not in Shrewsbury at all, the same amount of air pollution would be happening, the same diesel fumes. It wouldn't change the, it wouldn't change what, how much air pollution there is with this. So, in Grafton, 100% or 30% in Shrewsbury, it's the same thing for the air.
Was there, Mr. Mizuka?
Sorry, just to add to what Ms. Jones said there. Just as a point of information, what we understand with this project is they are installing natural gas fueling infrastructure. I can't comment on what percentage of vehicles or operations would be fueled through natural gas, but I just wanted to point that out with regards to the diesel comments, that it seems to be infrastructure being installed there for other fuel needs.
Further comments or questions? Was there, yes?
Linda Sarkisian, Precinct 4. So, living off of Route 20 for more years than I want to admit, the traffic and the trucks have been very difficult. And COVID was wonderful with less traffic, but that's about all it was wonderful for. But anyway, I just would like to say that I'm worried about these developments, that the traffic and if indeed we're moving from diesel, that would be great, but they're just too big. The one on the north end of the lake and this one are just more than many residents that are living in that area want. And I feel for this neighborhood with that. And I'm not sure that there's anything we can do, but I would hope there is. My question, though, are we getting any money from this transfer or just the tax money?
Mr. Mizuka.
So, as I noted, you know, the value of the appraised easement areas, $221,400. We will put it out through a request through a proposal process. We do intend to, I don't know if this is the right legal term, but encumber the easement and not allow them to have sole and exclusive access to it. So, but yes, we will be receiving a sum of money. I would expect it to be in the neighborhood of the 221, but that will play into a couple things. We, we want to, it's not going to be an exclusive easement. The town would retain rights to it. There's going to be utility access easements underneath it, which, of course, would benefit that property and potentially the town land. And we would like to see some sort of reversionary requirement where the town would get land back if that site was no longer used. And of course, as we begin to think about our celebration of our 300th anniversary, we're in this for the long haul. So, sure, if they're just going to build a building, it seems like it could be there for a long time, but I promise someone will be here longer. So, hopefully get the land back.
Further comments or que, yes, a follow-up? No?
Yes, if I could. Real estate in town is fairly expensive now, and I don't know any acre lots that are selling for 221, never mind two-acre lots. And with what they're putting into that building, I would think that access might be more valuable to them. But just a comment, I guess.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 40?
John, I'm taking your job as the town historian over here. Since at least the 80s, we've been talking about making improvements on Route 20 and bringing as much tax dollars into the town through revenue of businesses. This is what a lot of that area is zoned to do. So, it's actually considered a positive step. The improvements on Route 20 were expected to bring us more business, and so that's what's happening. There's no room on Route 9, and, you know, the logical place to put businesses is on Route 20. So, yes, we like the green space, and we need the tax dollars, and we need to find the happy medium.
Right down there, sir.
I'd like to ask to move the question.
Motion has been made and seconded to move the question. This is not subject to debate, so we'll immediately move to the comment of moving the question. It does require two-thirds. All those in favor of moving the question shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We will now move to the question on Article 40. Article 40, is everyone clear on what Article 40 does? Very good. All those in favor of Article 40 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 41.
I move the printed motion under Article 41.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 41 by a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
Article 41 provides for the town meeting to vote on the acceptance of land associated with the layout of Puritan Street. Puritan Street was recently significantly altered, taking it from a thru street that connected to Route 20 to a cul-de-sac when Route 20 was widened in 2022.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 41? Article 41, any comments or questions? Not seeing any, we'll move forward. This requiring a two-thirds vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 42.
I move the printed motion under Article 42.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 42 by a vote of seven to zero.
Town meeting members, you should know that we have a communication from Christopher McGoldrick, Director of Planning and Economic Development, regarding the planning board having held a public hearing on March 7, April 4, and May 2 regarding changes to the zoning bylaw associated with Article 42, 43, 44, and 45. Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. So, Article 42 is a proposal to expand our digital sign bylaw, which is currently existing in the town center district. Under current zoning, it's only, digital signage is only permitted in the town center district unless there's specific cases where zoning protections apply. The, this would be, allow for the digital signage to be permitted townwide, but it would be permitted in commercial, industrial, or multifamily locations, not single-family neighborhoods. The proposed language includes specific design standards and requires a special permit through the planning board, which would provide additional local control and regulatory protections.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 43? 42. Anyone on Article 42 comment or question? Yes.
Hi, Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. Just wondering what the planning board feels the benefit to the town would be as far as expanding digital signage. I know there's other towns, I think Sudbury might be one, where they really limit signage to standard, you know, wouldn't nice, what I would consider to be nice-looking signs. So, I'm wondering why we would want to expand digital, and is there a benefit to the town for doing so?
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. I can't speak specifically for the planning board. The town staff and our department, the impetus for bringing this proposal to the planning board and to town meeting is a frequent request from local businesses to include digital signage options. Again, this does include specific design standards similar to our town center district and is a special permit, which provides for expansive local control and reviewing the specific design of the sign that is proposed. We see this as an opportunity to meet that need of local businesses that are requesting this digital signage while still having the most local control in reviewing those through the planning board.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 42? Yes, sir.
Jason Mulida, Precinct 10. Can you speak to the, what the special permit process would look like? I mean, is it really just a, I don't like your sign? Or is there some kind of characteristics that would be evaluated? Or would there be one, a design pattern that is, you know, just anything to say? How do you evaluate a special permit request?
Thank you. So, the, the design criteria that are included with this includes, most specifically related to materials, as well as the size and shapes of the signage to be proposed. It certainly cannot, you know, go towards messaging that's protected, but to the extent that they to the extent that they can guide the aesthetics, that's included in the design guidelines. The special permit process is a discretionary permit with the planning board. As a discretionary permit, they have a wide and pretty vague, or not vague, but substantive criteria with which to review and render a proposal. So, discretionary permit is, gives them the most discretion in terms of reviewing a proposal for the context, not only with the specific property, but the surrounding neighborhood as well.
Comments or questions with reference to this article? Ms. McWilliams?
Carol McWilliams, Precinct 1. I'm just concerned about, will we be expecting to see lots more signage in town? The buildings that, or the businesses that already have signage, let's say on Route 9, will they be changing that signage to?
So, existing signage, so this supplements the existing signage that's allowed throughout the community, but allows for a digital option. What it would give is, it would give the option for businesses that have existing signage to add a digital component to it, or essentially apply for a special permit to change their sign to digital. Or, you know, they certainly could keep their existing sign or go with a non-digital version. This just provides that opportunity for businesses that want to pursue a digital signage option.
Hello?
Yes.
As a follow-up, I'm just wondering, will we see more signage? It mentions multi-unit facilities. Would that be just advertising, you know, what their units are?
So, primarily where we see a lot of the digital signage proposed is either through, where they want to provide, you know, businesses that want to provide certain information that changes day-to-day, businesses that have tenants, you know, shopping plazas where they co-locate all of their signs together, and they may have tenants that move out and move in. And rather than having a full new sign created or an insert created, they want to just be able to digitally change who the tenant is and advertise that.
Line is, are we going to see more signs than what we have now in town? Whether it's in the multifamily units of the business?
So, no. So, you know, the signage is allowed townwide. This provides for a digital option through those where a digital sign, unless it's already existing, would not be permitted to be created under the existing zoning.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 42? Just, yes, gentlemen.
Tony Bonaventura, Precinct 4. My concern with, my concern with this article is the language is very broad in the article, and it leaves it upon the boards to say no. And historically speaking, and that puts them in a very, in my opinion, puts them in a very tough position, and they generally have a hard time saying no. So, I would prefer, I think it's a great idea, but I think it would be better if the article was more specific and made things like throughout the town center more difficult. And there are some other areas in town that this would apply and leave it all up to the boards. I think that makes it difficult, and for that reason, I would have a hard time supporting this. I don't know if you have any comments on that, but.
Mr. McGoldrick.
So, again, the, the design criteria, it's not reflected in the article, but the language that's provided in the packets, it does have specific, in relation to the size and nature of the signage. So, the board under a special permit would have the ability to rely on those criteria, as well as the broader criteria of a discretionary permit and the special permit criteria which they render their decision under.
Thank you. And again, I'd just like to say that special permit process is, when it gets to those boards, it's very difficult for them to say no. And we've seen examples in town where they just have a hard time saying no to something that's broadly defined in the article, and then they have to say no to, because of the special permit only. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Would you please pass the mic two rows up? No, this way. Thank you.
He sort of touched on, Bridget Hilton, Precinct 8. He sort of touched on my concern, which is sort of the quaint nature of the center of town. And, you know, I'm all for modern everything, but, you know, it kind of has a nice charm to it. And I don't see any language in here designed to sort of preserve the, you know, Maple and Main part of town. And was that something that was considered or something that could be considered?
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. That's a great question. So, this, the digital signage bylaw and these provisions already exist in the town center with some additional signage protections. This would expand what is existing in the town center to townwide. So, we're precluding digital signage townwide, but still allowing it in the town center. So, again, we've tried to have the design standards as well as that special permit criteria to provide that for the protection of the context of the neighborhood for the board to consider when these signage are proposed.
Hello?
Follow up?
Yes, follow up. So, it sounds like we don't expect like there to be like a New York City Times Square in the center of town as a result of this. We're talking more maybe other places. It sounds like they already have the ability to do this, and that most of the businesses have chosen not to.
Right. So, this, this proposal does not adjust any signage language in the center of town?
Further? Further comments or questions with reference to Article 42 on the far right? My far right. That far right over there. Excuse me. Now, the person over there has been recognized.
Hi, Carissa Ford, Precinct 3. I'm just wondering if we anticipate any environmental impacts to an increase in digital signage, and if there's any suggestion that they're solar-powered or anything to that effect?
Mr. McGoldrick.
So, we don't require any provisions that they specifically be solar-powered in this current proposal or the utility connections. Any of the environmental, you know, the signs are pretty modest in terms of what size would be allowed and would likely have limited environmental impact. We have considered there's specific timing restrictions in terms of the lighting of the, of the signs, as well as dimming to reduce kind of light pollution in the community and, and some of those nature. So, not directly related to environmental, but I think tangent to that.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 42?
Precinct 7. Is there going to be any maximum, since digital signs blink, are there going to be a maximum amount of lumens allowed? And are we going to have blink like, again, the New York City?
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. So, we, so we limit depending upon specifically which districts or which type of use is applying for that digital signage. We do limit both how often that can change, whether it's a full hour or 30 minutes. And then we also limit the time of, like, duration that it can be lit. So, certain signs that would be closer to residential neighborhoods would need to be turned off at a certain hour.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 2? Any new town meeting members who'd like to speak? Write down, friend.
Shannon Wall, Precinct 7. I realize this might feel like a minor change, but this will definitely impact how the town looks as we drive through and drive by many businesses. So, I really just want people to remember that. Think forward to a year or two years as you're driving down Route 9 or Route 20 or whatever road you're driving down and viewing multiple digital signs. So, I think it's just something important to notate that this will definitely have a dramatic impact on our town.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 42? Anyone who has yet to speak this evening? Seeing any? Yes.
Diane Jones, Precinct 8. So, a gentleman in my neighborhood actually wanted to talk to me about this. And what he said, and he was born and raised here in Truistbury, he said, he doesn't want this because it would be garish. And he doesn't want to look down the road and see multiple garish signs, that it would just, he doesn't understand why we can't stay with the status quo because he thinks this would look garish. So, I'm just saying that.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Mr. Malina?
Ms. Malita, Precinct 10. So, Mr. McGoldrick, I, if I'm interpreting what you said earlier and just reading what I see here, can you just clarify, I believe what you're trying to say is that we're actually limiting the signage by the text that's being inserted. So, if we look at page 51, Section 5E, the bold and underlined is an ad, and that reads, "There shall be only one digital message board allowed per property." That's relative to Commercial Business Limited and et cetera, et cetera, as it's read there. So, can you just clarify for the room? Because I had some confusion about it. I thought we were adding the availability of digital signage elsewhere in our community. But as I read this with more clarity, I think you're adding, you're adding a limitation. So, it'd be best to have this. Is that correct?
Mr. McGoldrick.
So, we're doing both. As mentioned, so we allow digital signage in the current zoning bylaw in the town center district only. This expands those regulations to townwide. So, the signage that you see that are digital on Route 9 or Route 20 or anywhere else in town other than town center likely are either grandfathered or somewhat, somehow otherwise protected. This allows for those to be permitted through a special permit process with the planning board, but then applies restrictions on top of that to further protect what could be considered under that special permit. One of those is that condition that you cannot have more than one digital signage per property. So, we don't want to see, you know, a number of digital signage serving just one singular plaza. And that's geared towards if a business's, you know, a plaza property is going to go towards digital signage, we'd like them to co-locate them into one monument sign.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 42?
Hi, Carol Swyden, Precinct 6. I'd like to add on to what Mr. Malina just said. On the same page, 51, 5F, allow for a digital message board provided that the individual letters or numbers on the message board do not change more than once per hour and shall not include flashing or moving lights.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to this article?
Maureen Harrington, Precinct 1. So, I'm, I'm reading here, and it includes multifamily residential districts and apartments. Is that correct?
Mr. McGoldrick.
Correct. This expands the digital signage bylaw from the town center district into multifamily districts and the other, other districts identified. So, they would be able to pursue a digital signage on their property.
Thank you. Follow up?
Please.
How many properties are we actually talking about in town that this could potentially be? How many signs? How many properties?
So, this is not increasing the sign, the number of signs that would be allowed in town. This is just providing a digital option. This would go to townwide. So, this would be every, essentially every property in.
How many are we talking about?
Town, townwide.
Yeah.
However many ti, number of businesses are in town could be considered under this bylaw.
Hmm, that's a lot. I'm not in support of this article. Thank you.
Further comments or questions in reference to Article 42? Any new speakers? Yes, right there. Oh, Mark, just a second. The person behind you is coming out.
Erin Howard, Precinct 1. So, in Section 7E signs, the following signs are permitted in any district. Does that include residential, can I put a digital sign in front of my house as long as it meets these criteria in that section?
So, again, it would be a special permit through the planning board, and they do allow for signage in any district. But again, we would not be allowing them in any of the residential, single-family neighborhoods.
Further comments or questions? Looking for new, Mark, just a second. Way up. He's bringing you a mic.
Charles Garabedian, Precinct 2. My concern is when we put in these digital signs, will any type of consideration would be with interfering with traffic? Because a lot of times in driving down any road where you see all the signage, and you look in the distance, you'll see a control light, a signal light. And many times, a digital sign that's there already will interfere with my, someone's vision. Would there be some type of, let's say, inspection of the sign, of the site where you're going to put a digital sign? If that interferes with traffic, the people viewing that sign, and also other lights on, on that road, mainly traffic lights?
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. That would certainly be a criteria that the board could consider as a special permit, is the impact on traffic.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 42? Someone new? Yes.
Thank you. Hillary King, Precinct 6. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. McGoldrick and say you've done a nice job outlining the answers to a lot of these questions. I think that the, some good changes, and wonder what kind of enforcement the planning board or yourself have to enforce the rules.
Mr. McGoldrick, would you like to lateral that to your colleague, the building inspector? Ms. Sheehan?
Hi, I'm Patty Sheehan, Building Inspector and Zoning Enforcement Officer. So, anything that you do for zoning tonight, any changes, I'm the one who enforces it. So, this article is very helpful for the enforcement overall for the town. Right now, I can name the, actually in my head, on Route 20 and Route 9, which digital signs that we have and how they were put in place. Most of them by variance through the zoning board, because as we have in our zoning bylaw right now, is that no signs that are digital signs can flash, scroll, or have any moving parts, and I have to enforce that they cannot change more than once in a 24-hour period. So, this is more business-friendly, and it's also more enforcement-friendly. It's not going to increase the square footage of signage allowed on a property because that's under a different section of the bylaw. So, this will give the planning board discretion to look at all of the elements that are in, all the criteria that are in this section of this article and have some authority over that. It would be, I think it will be helpful to both the businesses and to the town staff to have this article.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 42? Martha?
Martha Deering, Precinct 4. I move the question.
Motion has been made and seconded to move the question on Article 42. Will now go to that immediate question, which is not subject to debate. All those in favor of moving question on Article 42 will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. We will now take the vote on Article 42. Article 42 requires a two-thirds. All those in favor of Article 42 will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
I do not believe it achieved two-thirds. Therefore, it does not pass. Article Forty-three. Because someone has to make the motion, and then we have a motion for standing vote? Do we have seven colleagues standing with them? I don't count seven. I now count seven. Very good. Okay, we will now move to a standing vote. Tellers, please take your positions. As we did last night, I will ask in a moment, once the tellers are in position, I will ask those who are in favor to stand and remain standing. All set? Okay, on Article Forty-two, all those in favor, please stand and remain standing.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-nine.
Eighteen.
Thirty-four.
Please be seated. All those opposed, please rise and remain standing. Please remain standing until the tellers get the count.
Twenty-one.
Four.
Twenty-one.
Twelve.
On this matter, one hundred and thirteen in the affirmative, fifty-eight in the negative. It does not achieve two-thirds. We will now move on to the next article. Article Forty-three, Farmers Market. I move the printed motion under Article Forty-three.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article Forty-three by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar? Is Mr. McGoldrick covering this? Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. Article Forty-three proposes to adjust the local definition of the farmer's market to amend the ratio of allowable produce versus craft vendors to a simple majority of produce vendors. This will allow for a greater variety of businesses to engage in farmer's markets locally.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Forty-three, Farmer's Markets? Screen? Forty-three, please. Thank you. Article Forty-three, any comments or questions with reference to Article Forty-three? Not hearing. Oh, yes.
Patricia Minton, Precinct Seven. Will this open the door for food trucks?
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. So it doesn't specifically outline food trucks, but I do believe that this would provide additional provision for food trucks to engage in the, the market as a vendor.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Forty-three? Not hearing or seeing any. This requiring two-thirds. We'll call the vote on Article Forty-three. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No.
No.
The ayes have it. Forty-three is approved. Town meeting, I just would like to update you on a matter regarding Article Forty-four and Forty-five. Generally, as we've been going through here, the zoning bylaws require two-thirds. However, the Mass General Law, Forty-A, was revised in two thousand and twenty, which allows for a simple majority to deal with certain zoning bylaws that promote the development of housing. Therefore, Article Forty-four and Forty-five require a simple majority. Mr. Samia? I move the printed motion under Article Forty-four.
Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee does not recommend Article Forty-four by a vote of six to two.
Mr. Mizikar?
Given the statewide discussion and complexities associated with the MBTA community zoning requirements, under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty-A, Section Three-A, the Select Board has asked that staff take additional time and submit final zoning article language to the state's adoption, state's optional pre-adoption review process. Staff has completed a mixed-use district location determination form and is awaiting formal determination on this component. That determination will help, help staff prepare the proposal for further pre-adoption review. Since compliance is required by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, at this time, we plan to bring a compliant proposal to Town Meeting this fall. In the interim, we'll do four specific things. Continue to work with our consultants and the state compliance model to refine our proposed zoning language and map. This also includes seeking the ability to increase the required amount of affordable units within any future development, up to twenty percent, where our current proposal seeks fifteen percent in accordance with the results of our economic feasibility analysis. The second, make any necessary edits to the overall bylaw once formal review of the mixed-use component is received. Third, share information submitted for pre-adoption with Town Meeting and develop an engagement strategy. And fourth, restart the formal public hearing process with the Select Board, Planning Board, and Finance Committee in preparation for the fall Town Meeting. Finally, and perhaps the point that I want to stress the most, to effectively use our time prior to Town Meeting. Although the merits of the state mandate are important and welcome, and we welcome this discussion, ultimately, Town Meeting will be voting in the fall on our local proposal, not the mandate itself. We find the merits of our local proposal to be the critical discussion piece, and we hope to focus on this. Our local proposal between now and the fall Town Meeting in order presented to this body for your consideration. Thank you.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Forty-four? Yes?
I have a couple of questions. So, one, I appreciate all the time and effort that everyone has put into this from the Planning Board and Select Board meetings. I know that, you know that, I know this is a big deal because it does also affect my neighborhood again. But I appreciate all the work you guys have done, and that we will be delaying discussion to the fall, so we have more time to kind of look things over and get that pre-adoption process completed. Just as far as tonight goes, in order to ensure that this gets moved to fall, would that involve a yes vote on this article or a no vote? It would be a no vote to ensure that it goes to fall. Okay. And then, next, I'd like to thank Mr. Kane for serving as moderator. I think you've been doing a great job, so I appreciate that. But I know your wife did vote on this in the state legislature, so I'm wondering if, when we speak on this at Fall Town Meeting, would we have a temporary moderator put in place in order for you to recuse yourself? I believe under Chapter Thirty-nine of Mass General Law, that is something that either would be required or available to us, just to kind of exclude any perceived, you know, conflicts of interest, given your close nature to this article?
Yeah, I have no intention of stepping aside. None whatsoever.
Okay. And then I guess, I don't know if this is a question for Town Council, but I believe it's under Section Fourteen of Chapter Thirty-nine in the Mass General Law. So if we could have that looked at, I just feel there, there is a conflict of interest, given the fact that Mr. Kane's wife did in fact vote for Article, or sorry, for, I believe it's Three-A, the MBTA Communities Act. She did vote affirmatively for this in the state legislature. So I would posit that that does pose a conflict of interest for him to serve as the moderator for any future discussion on this topic.
And I would respectfully disagree because it's a zoning bylaw like any other zoning bylaw. It's not passing judgment on a piece of legislation someone's spouse may or may not have voted on. But clearly, if you have a concern, put it in writing to the council. I'd be more than happy to review that, of course.
I appreciate that. I think my other thing I'd like to have us review is actually, Town Council has served as outside counsel for GFI, which is one of the developers that's been doing a lot of development here in Shrewsbury. And I just ask whether we looked into that relationship as far as the warehouse up near Two-Ninety? I know you don't currently serve as counsel for GFI, but just from, again, a conflict of interest standpoint, wondered if that was something the town and committees have looked at.
Thank you. Mr. Madouse, would you care to address that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stephen Madouse, Town Counsel. Late this afternoon, I learned that Mr. Ryan, who was here for the citizens petition last evening, sent an email to the Town Manager claiming that I had a conflict of interest relative to GFI. And the Town Manager called me late this afternoon. I did not hear from Mr. Ryan. I just saw the email that he sent alleging a conflict. I was unaware that I had ever done any work for GFI, but I've been practicing for thirty years in land use. So I did a computer search at my firm and learned that I had represented GFI in two thousand and five and two thousand and six in a zoning matter for the city, in the city of Worcester, relative to a rezoning of a parcel downtown. I was unaware that I had represented GFI most recently from, in two thousand and five. So I disclosed, I was appointed Town Counsel in two thousand and fifteen. So that was prior to my time working for the town. So I have not been influenced. I disclosed to Town Meeting, I disclosed publicly to the Select Board, my appointing authority, to the Town Manager, that none of my prior work that I didn't even recall in the recent past for GFI has influenced, unduly influenced my service as Town Counsel. It is not a conflict, in my view. I think it's unreasonable to conclude that it's a conflict, that I would be influenced by something in two thousand and five in the city of Worcester for a zoning matter that was wholly unrelated to the matters before Town Meeting or with the town of Shrewsbury in two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you.
Mr. Samia?
So, under the practice of law, I've been practicing law for twenty-six years. Just because you represent someone in the past doesn't, when the matter's closed, it doesn't preclude you from something eighteen, nineteen years later. To be clear, Mr. Madouse has not had anything to do with this project, correct? And if you follow that because you represented someone on an unrelated matter sixteen years ago, and that would conflict you out, that would conflict every law firm out of everything. That's not the way it works in terms of conflicts. When law firms run conflict checks, they look at active matters to determine whether or not there's a conflict and whether a waiver needs to be from the clients. So in this case, I'm comfortable that this is a matter well-passed that has no influence in this town in this matter. And furthermore, Attorney Madouse did not participate in this matter from the purchase of the property by GFI through what's brought forward today or yesterday in front of Town Meeting. So I think it's careful that, appreciate opinions, and it's good to have conversation. I honestly appreciate that being brought up. But it's also too important to understand that something that happened a long time ago, and it does not preclude in the future, and as Attorney Madouse also said, is that it didn't impact any decisions. And in this case, his decision didn't apply to anything that went throughout the process. So that's just my thought on that in terms of whether or not there's a conflict. I don't see one.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Forty-four? Yes?
Sanam Zaher, Precinct Seven. I was wondering if the town has ever engaged in any kind of equity audit on all of our zoning bylaws? And if not, if there's any plans to do something like that in the future?
Mr. Mizikar?
We have not conducted an equity audit through our zoning, and I would be happy to explore that and perhaps reach out to you and understand a little bit more detail associated with that.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Forty-four? Not hearing or seeing any. Oh, yes. One on the far right, my far right.
Carissa Ford, Precinct Three. I just wanted to say I've really appreciated the communication emails that the Town Meeting members received leading up to this meeting. I think we got like ten or twelve weekly recaps. And so I'm just hoping that that continues with Article Forty-four potentially being pushed to the fall. I would love to continue to get those updates. It was really helpful.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article Forty-four? Not hearing or seeing any. We will call the vote. The request is to defeat. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed? No. Motion is defeated. Article Forty-five. I move the printed motion under Article Forty-five.
Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article Forty-five by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. Article Forty-five updates our existing senior housing regulations by creating a new overlay zoning district and bylaw to support the development of over fifty-five senior housing communities on residential lots of five acres or greater. This proposal would organize existing provisions in the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw into a single more comprehensive section rather than having them scattered throughout the zoning bylaw, and it expands upon those provisions to encourage better design criteria.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article Forty-five? Article Forty-five, not seeing or hearing anyone. We'll call the roll. Beth, are you looking for someone? Way, way, yes. Please.
Linda Sarkisian, Precinct Four. I'm just curious, this is different than over fifty-five development, or it's all the same?
Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you. So this is in relation to over fifty-five development. So any proposal under this zoning bylaw would require a over fifty-five restriction.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Forty-five? Not hearing or seeing. We will call the vote on this matter. It's requiring a simple majority. It's requiring a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 45 shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. It carries. Town Meeting members, on the next several articles, we have the following recommendation. In a communication from Christopher McGoldrick dated May 9, the Planning Board held a public hearing on March 20th, April 4th, May 2nd, 2024, regarding changes to the zoning bylaw associated with Articles 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, and 51. And they were voted unanimously, four in favor, zero opposed. We will now move to Article 46. Under Article 46.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 46 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. Article 46 is in relation to providing a brew pub definition in the zoning bylaw. This proposal will allow licensed restaurants to produce and sell beer and/or ale at the location and may include the sale and preparation of food to be consumed on the premises. Malt beverages, including beer, ales, and hard ciders produced on the premises may be sold to other establishments, but shall not exceed 25% of the establishment's production capacity. What this does is this allows for brew pubs or similar to a tap house type use, where the use is primarily a restaurant or food service business, but may have some production of beer on site, the majority of which is also consumed on site with very minor shipping or sending of that beer to other establishments.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 46? Yes.
Judy Vetter, Precinct 9. I was a little bit curious. It says for food and beverage to be consumed on the premise. Does that mean that it's excluding the ability to have takeout? Or, I know Massachusetts passed a law to continue to have beverages to go. So is that, would they not be able to do takeout and beverages to go with the way that this is written?
What I would suggest is the word, the operative word there is "may include the sale and preparation of food to be consumed on site." So this allows for, the business may not necessarily provide a food option other than what's required by the state licensing authority, if that, depending upon their business type. It would allow that flexibility to just produce some beer and provide that onsite consumption.
I may not be reading this correctly, but let's say that they do want to prepare food. It says here, "to be consumed on the premises," period. So does that exclude the ability for it to be takeout or beverages to go? I'm reading it that it's pretty directive.
A building inspector has something to offer.
So Patty Sheehan, Building Inspector. So the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, they would, whatever applies to other similar types of restaurants where you can consume beverages on site and you allow that takeout alcohol, that should apply under the licensing as well.
Ms. Vetter, follow up? Please come near the microphone.
I just want to make sure, Patty, what you're saying is, regardless of what it says here, it can be takeout or beverages to go if it's under the licensing?
Right, the licensing would dictate further about that, yes.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 46? Yes. Just a second, wait for a microphone.
It's a point of information. Louise Garone, Precinct 8. So such a business would still be required to obtain a liquor license from the state, correct or incorrect?
Mr. McGoldrick.
That's correct. You would have to...
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 46? Yes, right there.
Jason Molina, Precinct 10. So we're defining it in this article, but where is it allowed? Some, can you comment on that?
So this definition is not currently in the bylaw. So this type of use would not be allowed in the community at all, under the current zoning. Under the proposed zoning, it will achieve new areas. And those are the subsequent Articles 46, sorry, 47, 48, and 49 would establish locations.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 46? Not hearing or seeing any. We'll call the vote. It's requiring two-thirds. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 47. I move the printed motion under Article 47.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 47 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. Article 47 proposes to use the existing nano brewery, the new brew pub definition, as well as the existing micro brewery definition, and allow these uses by special permit through the Planning Board in the Lake Way Overlay District. Currently, the nano brewery and micro brewery definitions are only allowed in the town center. This would expand that to locations which are more viable for these types of uses.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 47? Article 47, not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll call the roll. It's requiring two-thirds. All those in favor of Article 47 shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 48. I move the printed motion under Article 48.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 48 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. Article 48 is nearly identical to Article 47 in nature, with the exception that it allows for those uses by special permit through the Planning Board in the Route 20 overlay.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 48? Yes.
Remington, Precinct 9. So I'm a little confused. If we're saying the last one, that we can have it all over the town, why do we need one just for that route?
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. So it adds the definition to the bylaw. None of these uses would be allowed townwide. These are establishing them as allowable uses by special permit or by right in those overlays. Currently, these definitions are only allowable in the town center district.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 48? Yes.
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. I have a question, I think it's for you, Mr. McGoldrick, about how it looks like one of these allows the development by right. I think it's for the micro brewery one, whereas the nano was not development by right. And I'm wondering why there was a distinction between those two. Thanks.
Thank you. The distinction's made. So micro breweries are larger in scale in terms of operation. And so we're requiring those by special permit. Nano breweries and brew pubs are much smaller scale in nature, or in the case of a brew pub, more restaurant oriented. And so we're proposing those by right. Certainly, depending upon the scale of what the proposal is, may trigger site plan approval with the Planning Board.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 48? Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll call the roll. This two requires a two-thirds. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Article 49. I move the printed motion under Article 49.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 49 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. So Article 49 proposes for that newly established brew pub definition as by right in the Edgemere Overlay District, as well as nano brewery, the existing definition, by special permit through the Planning Board. To the point made previously, it does not include a provision for micro brewery. This distinction was made as, it's slightly more restrictive than the other overlays, and that's due to the context of the area having smaller lots nearer on the lake.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 49? Article 49, any comments or questions? Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll call the roll. This two requires two-thirds. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Article 50. I move the printed motion under Article 50.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 50 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. Article 55, sorry, Article 50 proposes for the expansion of the flexible development overlay district, specifically Sub-District A. This would expand that district over the existing office research district, which is the Charles River Labs and the UMass South Street facility. This would provide additional flexibility for consideration of uses by special permit. There is no change to the existing language being proposed. It is a zoning map amendment only.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 50? Yes.
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. Just wondering what specifically would be changing between the current map and this new map?
Thank you. So on the map that's been provided in gray, you'll see the flexible development overlay, Sub-District A. Just to the south of that is the existing flexible development overlay, Sub-District B. What this proposal would do in orange, Sub-District A expansion, that area with the orange hash would now be included in Sub-District A as the expansion.
Clear? Follow up?
I guess, my question maybe is, so what would this accomplish? Like, what would we hope would go here if we did change the zoning?
Yeah, so, so again, this would expand the flexibility to consider additional uses by special permit, which are under the, the Sub-District A category. So the Sub-District A identifies the number of special permit uses. Those are not allowed in the Office Research District. This would expand that over that Office Research District, and those uses could be considered under that flexible development overlay via special permit.
Further comments or questions with reference to this article? Yes.
Judy Vetter, Precinct 9. Geez, lost my mind for a minute. I guess I don't quite understand what Sub-District A expansion could include. I don't like the word flexibility. I like research and development, and I don't want any more warehouses. So what are we talking about as far as flexibility here? As what could now end up up there? Because I think we need to get a very detailed list because right now, because you said that's up, is that the Allen property? Is that correct? Is that the, because that's...
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and then, so if you could be very specific about what we're opening ourselves up to if this passes?
Thank you. I can pull up the specific uses that are identified in Sub-District A. I will note warehouse use is not allowed in the Sub-District A category. Just take me a minute to pull up the zoning bylaw. The uses are primarily research and development, but in terms of specifics, I can pull up the uses. So uses and structures allowed by special permit. The Planning Board may grant a special permit for the following uses in accordance with that section in Sub-District A. All uses allowed by special permit in the Office Research District. Manufacturing enterprise, which may include up to 15% accessory retail, measured by gross floor area. Healthcare facilities, assisted living residents, corporate conference or training center with reception areas, hotels, lodging house. For-profit educational use. Campus master plan development on 10 or more acres of land and other accessory uses customarily incidental to a special permitted use.
Satisfied or follow up? Very good. Further comments or questions? Yes. Microphone's coming.
Louise Garone, Precinct 8. What is the size of that piece?
I don't have the exact acreage in front of me.
Okay, but it, as, would that be, could, could that be a candidate for the, for a senior overlay district? Under the allowed uses, you said senior care facility, didn't you?
Sorry, yeah, so, so a healthcare facility, such as a medical office building, medical clinic, and then assisted living residence or continuing care retirement community, which may include an adult daycare facility.
Okay. So would that, or would that not be eligible for the senior, for a senior overlay district application?
So it's not, so it's not a residential use, so the, if it's, if the question's in reference to the bylaw that was passed this evening, no, it would not.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 50? Yes, sir.
Ed Bolter, Precinct 1. Is there a known project kind of waiting in the wings that is requiring this in order to move forward? Or this, I'm just wondering what spawned this activity?
So there is no known project existing. The Sub-District A is similar to what we've seen from development of the Centec Park North facilities, which was a, you know, a recent economic development activity. The hope would be that this would spur additional flexibility to consider those types of uses directly proximate to that existing facility.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 50? Anyone new? Yes.
Caroline Maycomber, Precinct 9. Promise this is a quick one. Under this overlay currently, do we know, is this private property? Or is any of it town-owned land currently?
There is no town-owned property under the existing overlay or proposed overlay. It would all be private.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 50? If not, we'll call the roll. Article 50 requires a two-thirds. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 51. I move the printed motion under Article 51.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 51 by a vote of eight to zero.
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. Article 51 is a proposed amendment to correct the zoning bylaw effective date. Proposes to correct the existing reference in the zoning bylaw from August 2nd, 1967, to the correct date of May 18th, 1955. This has an effect on determining zoning protections for pre-existing non-conforming properties. It's primarily a procedural impact.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 50? Comments or questions with reference to Article fifty-one? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll call the roll. This two requires two-thirds. All those in favor of the article, Article fifty-one, shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article fifty-two.
I move the printed motion under Article fifty-two.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article fifty-two by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick. Mr. Mizikar.
The purpose of this article is to codify an existing practice of Selco and a similar requirement for new subdivisions. Underground utility services are more durable and resilient than overhead wires. By restriction, the construction of new utility poles and overhead wires in favor of underground services, the bylaw created by this article would thus help bolster the reliability of Shrewsbury's utility infrastructure, leading to fewer outages and less systems maintenance. Underground services target and help limit the, some of the top causes of utility outages, such as weather, tree limbs, wildlife, and vehicular accidents. Furthermore, underground design is more aesthetically pleasing than above-ground poles and wires. There are two other factors that will further emphasize the importance of grid hardening as we move towards the future, strategic electrification, and increasingly frequent severe weather events. As Shrewsbury residents and businesses continue to install electric race technology like heat pumps and electric vehicles, and to adopt smart devices that rely upon internet connectivity, reliability will become even more important, and this will be critical for all of our future.
Comments or questions with reference to Article fifty-two? Comments, yes, sir?
Robert Cray, Precinct Two. Does this affect utilities that are not Selco that run high voltage wires through the town at this time? What would be the effect on their ability to maintain or expand their services through the town if this, if this warrant is passed?
I think we should have a spokesperson from Selco. Is there someone in the room who could come forward and identify themselves and provide the gentleman with an answer? Good evening.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Roy. I'm the general manager of Selco. Slightly less charismatic than Mr. Rowley from last night, but I'll do my best. To answer your question, yes, this bylaw does impact all utilities. That also includes our own fiber deployments, our electric service. So the intent is to impact all infrastructure serving the community.
Thank you. Follow-up? Stay right there, Mr. Roy, please.
Yeah, follow-up question is, by what authority does Selco have to regulate public utilities that are already regulated by the state?
Mr. Mizikar, I think that's more in your bailiwick, given the nature of the bylaw.
Yeah, so it's not Selco regulating other utilities. It's the town of Shrewsbury regulating utilities, and we do have this authority. There's a process called Grant of Location that's, that authority is held under the general laws by the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Further comments or questions with reference to Article fifty-two? Yes.
Caroline May Cumber, Precinct Nine. Just a quick one. I think this sounds awesome. Will this just be for new construction, or will it also help out existing neighborhoods that have overhead lines?
Mr. Mizikar.
So it targets new construction, and I know, maybe I can, I don't know if I'll speak for Mr. Roy, but in having conversations with Mr. Roy, you know, it is Selco's desire to get as much of their assets underground as possible. So although it wouldn't be required, if there is substantial changes that are needed throughout the community and neighborhoods, they would be looking to put as much underground as possible.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article fifty-two? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll take this to the vote. It requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article fifty-two shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Article fifty-two carries. Article fifty-three.
I move the printed motion under Article fifty-three.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend Article fifty-three by a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
This item is recommended defeat of this article, so in order to ensure that we have the most accurate analysis of the current funding position of the Retirement Trust Fund, the Retirement Board will consider bringing similar article back to a future town meeting.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article fifty-three? The desire is to defeat. Not hearing or seeing anyone, all those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The noes have it. It's defeated. Article fifty-four.
I move the printed motion under Article fifty-four.
Enthusiastically second the last motion.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article fifty-four by a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article proposes to amend Article twenty-five of the general bylaw, which regulates donation bins. The current bylaw requires the donation collection bins to be placed in an area that complies with all setback requirements, in an area that does not interfere with parking, which is not feasible in many situations. By making this amendment, we seek to restore the original intent of the bylaw, which is to ensure that the bins are located in an area where they are the most aesthetically pleasing and do not interfere with vehicles on property.
Comments or questions with reference to Article fifty-four? Not hearing or seeing any. We will call the roll on Article fifty-four, simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Article fifty-four passes. It appears that we have come to the end of our work for the annual town meeting in two thousand and twenty-four. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. We're adjourned.